I think we are all here and we have Commissioner, do we have both of our Commissioners?
I believe we have Commissioner McLawhorn.
Commissioner McLawhorn and...
And Commissioner Webb was to join us, we'll see if he calls in or not.
Okay, by phone, Mr. McLawhorn had a slight accident with his leg and he's having to keep it elevated, but he wanted to participate, so we're glad he's here. Hey Melvin.
Hey, thank you for having me.
Well, thank you for being willing to sit there and listen. I'd like to welcome all of you here. This is an important workshop for Pitt County and for Pitt County Commissioners. We have been in the development business for a long time and I'm very proud to say that we have been very effective. And the people, when we are using taxpayers' money for something as big as this, I think that we owe them and we owe, and all of the Commissioners, we all need to be on the same page and have a little history and a little background brought forward. We are anticipating that we will have one more meeting at least on the same topic and we are, at that time, we'll consider whether we need to do a public hearing. But thank you so much for those of you who are here, for being here, and the Commissioners. And I'll turn it over to Scott to speak to the purpose of the meeting.
Okay. Thank you Chairman Ward. So, welcome and good morning, everybody. Just for a housekeeping item, I guess for Commissioner McLawhorn and Commissioner Webb, if he joins us by phone, the county attorney and I were talking and we think it would probably be appropriate to acknowledge them via the teleconference and then if the Board takes any official action today on anything, that we would include their, their action via the, their conference call if the Board is agreeable with that. Do you think we should have a vote on that or just consensus?
Typically, if we have participants by telephone, they fully participate, but we do not count them for purposes of quorum or their vote. If you want their vote to count today, then you would need, as a Board, to approve that action.
I would move that they be recognized, that their vote be recognized.
Second?
Second?
Okay, let's vote please, by hand raising.
Okay.
Unanimous.
That passes.
Okay, great. Well, again, my comments are just to kind of give the, the purpose of the day and I think we all know the purpose is to talk about industrial and economic development. We plan to, through a variety of means, through the agenda, to present and discuss information regarding industrial development and economic development because they're, they're close cousins, but they're, they're different cousins in nature. We want to acknowledge also that there probably are some gaps in the current model that, that we, as County, operate, not gaps in industrial, but gaps between industrial and economic development that could be, could be addressed through what's being discussed. Again, the County's current model is industrial, industrial development. We also want to recognize that from a County Government perspective, the Pitt County Board of Commissioners is the only entity in Pitt County that represents every single citizen, whether you're in a municipality, whether you're in the rural area, and you have a unique perspective on it compared to maybe a smaller or larger jurisdiction that is focusing just on their constituents. You represent all of the constituents in Pitt County. So, on your agenda in front of you, you'll see we've broken the workshop into three blocks. Block one, we're going to kind of give you a who, what, why, where, and when and history of the Pitt County Industrial Development Commission. And we commonly refer to it as the PCDC, Pitt County Development Commission. I think through time, we kind of dropped the industrial, but Pitt County Development Commission's focus is, is industrial development. And you can see the points in there we're gonna, we're gonna hit. Then Block two, we have a special presentation by Mr. Norris Tolson from the Carolina's Gateway Partnership. He is the President, Executive Director, in charge of, of the Gateway Partnership. And Mr. Tolson has a, a very distinguished history in the state of North Carolina, being the former President of the North Carolina Biotechnology Center, being former Secretary of Commerce, former Secretary of Transportation, former Secretary of Revenue, and I probably left some other things out, but that kind of gives you the, the gist of the notoriety and the expertise of the speaker we have to give us a presentation on the Carolina Gateways Partnership. Then lastly, in Block three, there are elements of the, the new P3 model for economic development that are listed there to, for possibly discussion or further consideration either today, today or at some point in time. So, with that Chairman Ward, we'll begin with Block one and if you'd like to turn it over to the county attorney, we can start with the, reviewing the original enabling legislation and the amended legislation that created the Pitt County Industrial Development Commission.
Are you all fine for me to speak from my seat or do you need me to go up front? Can you hear me from here?
Everybody okay?
Okay. Great, so, I'm just gonna start out talking about the enabling legislation for the current Pitt County Industrial Commission and it dates back to, to May 29th of 1957. At that time, a local act was passed by the General Assembly and that 1957 local act, which is contained behind Tab A in your notebooks, did essentially two things. The first thing it did was it authorized the Board of Commissioners in Pitt County to hold a special election to determine the will of the voters to enact an industrial development tax of up to three cents for $100 in valuation for the purpose of attracting new and diversified industries to Pitt County and to encourage new business and industrial ventures by local and foreign capital. The second thing it did, that is if a majority of voters favored that tax, it created the Industrial Development Commission of Pitt County. And that entity at that time was to be made up of 17 members appointed by the County Commissioners, one member from each township, because we had townships then, and two members to be named at large, one of whom had to be the Chair of the Board of County Commissioners. So, this commission was empowered to elect officers, create bylaws, rules, policies, and manage that industrial development tax, the funds. They were specifically authorized to obtain office space and exercise all duties that are necessary for the purpose that it was created. The tax, the election did happen, the voters did find it favorable, and that is the Industrial Development Commission tax that we have now and the Development Commission that exists today. On June 27th of 1988, that act was amended and granted authority to the County Commissioners. It really granted flexibility. And what happened in 1988 was the General Assembly said, "Pitt County Government, you can have the discretion to set the number of seats on the Development Commission, set the terms of office for the Development Commission members," and it removed all seat attributes. It made all seats to be members at large with the only requirement being that they be residents of Pitt County. As a result of that, the Industrial Development Commission was reshaped to its now size of 15 members. July 5th of 1990 is the only other legislation, local act, that affected our Pitt County Development Commission directly. And that provided additional authority to the members of the Industrial Development Commission to purchase or sell land for economic development purposes without having to, for lack of a better term, jump through the hoops that public entities have to jump through when they buy or sell land. So, there are specific requirements, bidding, advertisements, and those sorts of things if a local government was to acquire or sell land. And in 1990, the General Assembly indicated, told us that we did not have to follow those if we were purchasing or selling land as it relates to economic development. So, that covers both of the bullets under Block one for my part, the enabling legislation and the voter referendum refers to the voters approving that tax. The tax is up to three cents, although we do not levy the full three cents and that amount varies and is set by the Board of Commissioners at budget time each year. Any questions?
What is that number?
Is it, um, yes, is it .7?
.7.
.7 cents now.
Thank you. Excuse me Tom.
Yeah, .07. Thank you. That's why we have a CFO. Seven cents. Yeah, .07.
The entity that we're talking with, Convergence, if you read this, should not, whatever is created, is a larger board fall within or under these legislative authorities? Or what we've seen as an outline, will it potentially be in conflict with some of this and cause this to either be void or maybe we, as a County, doing something improper?
So, I think I can answer your question. I'd rather answer your question from a could rather than a should. Could it be, from a legal perspective, within some subset of that board? The answer is yes. Should it be, is a matter for this Board to decide. Would it be in legal conflict? I think there are considerations that will have to be made to be sure that it is not in legal conflict, whatever structure is adopted. And some of the areas that you'll have to be careful about is I think the 1988 legislation gives you some flexibility so that you can set the number of members on your Industrial Development Commission anywhere, to any number you want, including one or zero. But the other factor is that it's that Industrial Development Commission that's authorized to manage and required to manage that industrial development tax. And so, to the extent there needs to exist some form of an entity to manage that tax, I don't know that the legislation as it's designed allows you to do away with some element of the structure or oversight. And so, I think when you get into those details of a model, I'll be sure to chime in if I think something that's being suggested violates the law. Does that answer your question?
I'm sure I will have more along that line somewhere down the road.
But I think the opportunity to phone in is certainly there for any plan that we come up with, with your guidance.
Yes.
If I can just chime one thing, the legislation really creates a model for a public entity versus the P3 model is the public-private, the, adding the private element to it. If it's a private element, then you're talking about a 501(c)(3) type organization. It's kind of analogous to even with the hospital, putting the hospital spot off into its current framework, which is not a public entity. So, I just want to throw that into the mix. Well, next we have, on the Board makeup, Wanda Yuhas, and this will be under Tab B in your booklet finder.
And while Wanda's coming to the microphone, we have asked her to kind of give us a picture of what development, industrial development has been here in Pitt County over the years and so that we can just have a little bit of that history and know how involved the County has been. Thank you, Wanda.
Thank you. Picking up on Janice's comments, when the Board, when the Development Commission was created by an act of the Legislature, there was the expectation that each township have a Board member. Even without that requirement though, the Commissioners historically, since that change in legislation, and that was when I was coming on board at the Development Commission, has always been very sensitive to having people from throughout the County as members of the Board. So, for instance, you would never see a Development Commission Board that was all District 5 or, or any other place. I would also mention that there were other counties that tagged on to the Pitt County legislation request in 1957. We are the only one currently using that model. In most of the other cases though, their Commissioners decided they wanted the organization to be a county department. As Scott has pointed out a number of times, the Development Commission does not have taxing authority. The County Commissioners have taxing authority on our behalf. And that's, that's a different thing. It's not that you could bypass the Commissioners and we could just go ahead. We were styled as the Industrial Development Commission. All Board members are, are appointed at large. Over the years, we have also designated partners for specific knowledge and skill basis. So, for instance, we hold a seat for Pitt Community College. Pitt Community College will say, "Here's the person we would like to have represent us." That goes to the Commissioners, they could accept or reject that. The same is true for the University, for Vidant Health Systems, and for the City of Greenville. The city is allowed to, to recommend one person who will serve as a member of that Board. We also try, and the Commissioners have done this on our behalf, again, in the areas of expertise, currently, we have an attorney on our Board. That is helpful to us. But to have that mix of kinds of people. There are no elected officials on our Board except for our liaison to the County Board of Commissioners. Everyone else is either appointed from the public sector such as Tom Kulakowski from PennCo or, you know, again, in the case of Pitt Community College or the University and so on. But there are no elected officials on that Board at all. In your notebooks, you have a list of our allies and these are, the people you have there, the organizations you have there.
Tab C.
Tab C, thank you Scott. Are the people that we work with on a nearly day, well, I won't say daily, we'll say weekly basis. I also have a more expanded list for you. We have an extensive number of partners. You know, we have Norris Tolson with us today. Right now, we're in partnership with Nash and Edgecombe Counties and a number of others to address workforce development issues. So, even with these more complete lists of here are the people who are our colleagues and who, who help us get our work done and whom we help, there are new partnerships that come along all the time based on those needs. So, that is a complete list of our partners. I believe all of you also have the 30-year snapshot of industrial activity.
Tab D.
Tab D.
Tab B. I'm sorry, I don't have a notebook. Tab B. And if I'm going through this too fast and you want to, to talk about anything, please stop me at any time.
Is there any way that the people who are here could see this list? I mean, I'm asking you. I mean, we can't project it up there? Okay, that's fine.
But that is something that I can provide to the PIO Office and so if this is going to go on our channel, that that can be there. With this snapshot of activity, because we are far enough away from the project, the largest industrial project we have ever had in Pitt County was $350 million. The company that made that investment was working on a Department of Defense contract and we were not able to announce that investment. We are now eight years out from that investment, so we now have, for the first time, added that $350 million to our investment totals. Previously, that $350 million was not there. So, what you should be looking at is a grand total since 1987 of $2,883,411.
Two billion eighty-three.
Two billion, I'm sorry, I don't usually work on Saturday.
Welcome to the club.
But at any rate, we are well over $2 billion in investment, industrial.
Two point one billion in investment and almost 13,000 total jobs.
And, and again, that's since 1987. We were simply not maintaining those numbers before then. That is strictly industrial, that doesn't include the retail development that has happened here, it doesn't include entrepreneurship, you know, anybody who's been on Dickinson Avenue in Greenville lately and you can see millions of dollars in investment there that is entrepreneurship and small business, restaurants and the like. So, that doesn't show up here. Yes, sir?
Wanda, is it fair to say it doesn't include the East Carolina University jobs or the Vidant Health?
Right, that is also correct. It does not include any employee expansions from the University or Vidant.
You don't take off the ones that left you?
No, we do not. And that's because they come and go and...
So, what is the net result? I'd be more interested in the net result. How much did actually sustain, you know, the period of time? I used to work at Vermont American, I know they brought in about $10 million, I think it was '92, '93. But 10 years later, they sold out the Bosch, Bosch closed, closed the plant and moved it and those jobs, 300-plus jobs are no longer here.
And we have since then put Edgecombe Furniture into that building. They employ 150 people, they're looking at adding 100 jobs, so we don't lose that.
And what years were they? Or are they...
They're brand new in the last year.
Are they on this list?
I'd have to look, I don't think they would be on this list.
Well, my point is, is it would an example potentially have been that yes, a company is closed, but now you got somebody else that's moving in there, it shows up as, as double numbers.
If you go to our bottom line for number of jobs that there are and the size of the tax base, then you'll still, you'll see an accurate number from, and the perspective we operate on is that if we, if a company leaves a building, that building is of use to us and we put it back on the market and we put somebody in it. But you are correct, we, we are looking just at what happened. There are some things about that too, if, if what we're trying to do is evaluate the effectiveness of our organization, you know, Vermont American closed because the Chinese could make, package, and ship drill bits more cheaply than our plant here could make them.
That's not correct, I was at that company. That was not the reason.
Well...
It's because Bosch bought Vermont American. That was the reason.
And I can, I can only state what the plant manager at the time stated to me.
Well, Gary didn't give you a complete picture then.
But in, in those cases, you know, we're, we're not able to control market issues, that's...
We're trying to get an overview of the job that has been done by the Development Commission over the years because we think it's our, important that our citizens, certainly the Commissioners and other people know how effective and what a fabulous job it's done back to your predecessor. And when you look at just that bottom line figure, when you think about where we started, because when I was here, the first closed session, the amount of money that we gave to, as an incentive, I'm still amazed at how low it was. It was like we didn't quite understand what was going on and now we are in a much better place and this is just a sign of the job that you all have done and that was the only reason for this. Thank you.
Yes ma'am.
It, it does make a difference though, in good logic, that when a company leaves and there are more jobs leaving than there are coming in, it does change our economy, in my opinion. And I'm not saying the cost or whatever, but the count should be, should be taken in consideration. But there's a question that I'm concerned, you aren't even finished though, are you? You're near finished.
No, but, you want to hold your question then? Because, maybe you can bring it out when, I get a lot of question from the citizens as to why development or why areas in the, in the county is unequal as in development. And because if I have to drive 20 miles and you have to walk two blocks and always, you know, it makes a difference on the economics of the household. And if, if there aren't same services, and I know commercially not, and we've had that round. And so, but it impacts the area. It, it impacts household very strongly. And gas and those who don't have cars and we don't have transportation. So, these are things that I'm looking to see in this.
And that, Commissioner Perkins-Williams, I think relates to the comment that Scott led with, that we are talking about both industrial development and then the larger category of economic development and that commercial, retail, entrepreneurship, those kinds of things are that economic development component or larger component, not our industrial component.
I heard him say that, but I wanted everybody to know, I'm very serious about those two things when it comes down to economics and development, how it impacts families and households is tremendously important to me.
And what are the ways that we can positively have an impact on those communities beyond industrial? But you're spending money on industrial, so let me tell you what money you're spending. We have some different accounts. The number that probably most of you are hearing is the $750,000, $760,000. That is the Development Commission's operating budget. That's account 269200. And Scott or Beth, what tab is that?
Tab E.
Tab E. Besides our regular operations, we also include incentives there. When, at, at the end of any given budget year, the Development Commission is allowed to retain its fund balance. Currently, if we are going to give an incentive to a company, the dollars for that will be budgeted out of the Development Commission's fund balance. So, when I come to the Commissioners, I am asking for their concurrence with that recommendation as opposed to for a decision because they're not going to have to find it in the general fund. Yes, Scott?
If I could just make a comment on that, if, if the County were to assume and stay with the same model through the PCDC, we need to change how we budget incentives. We can't rely upon the Development Commission's fund balance to continue to pay incentives as we are executing the incentive agreements. We're finding as we project forward that you will not have sufficient fund balance to pay those incentives, so we need to... Brian and I have talked about a different way to fund those, year to year, so that they're actually accounted for in the County's operating budget. They're paid out if the company puts the investment on the ground and creates the jobs.
Right. All incentives are performance-based, so nobody gets cash upfront. What Scott is explaining is that, you heard earlier, that we get point oh seven, the Development Commission gets .07 cents. So, if the County Commissioners say, "We're going to give an economic development grant that will be 25% of their new taxes paid after they've paid them," then that comes out of the Development Commission budget, the Commissioner, the County, not the Commissioners, the County gets back a whole dollar. The Development Commission gets back .07 cents. Incentives don't show up in our legislation because in 1957, there were no incentives. It was, it was a simpler world, I suppose. But at this point, incentives are very much a part of virtually every project. One that, because the company's clinical trial, third, Phase III clinical trial failed, did not become before the Commissioners, but it was a 600 to 800 million dollar project. Obviously, we all want that project. The Development Commission's fund balance would not handle the incentives for a project that size. Yes, ma'am?
Wanda, just one thing, I want to reiterate that this workshop is really for us to inform the public and all of the Commissioners as a group, how we are functioning presently. And in our next meeting, hopefully, we're going to be able to come on board with if we want to move on. we want to move on, with adding the industrial to what we're doing, and how can we do that in Pitt County, and be good stewards of the taxpayers' money that comes from our citizens. So we're not making a plan now, we're trying to get background on what we're presently doing. And we're going to have ample time to discuss what it is we want to see in development in Pitt County. Thank you.
Commissioner Ward mentioned my predecessor, and I think this also plugs into Commissioner Coulson's point about changes as companies go, too. Prep Shirt closed in Pitt County very early in the days of textiles disappearing. At the time, there were funds available that would allow us to purchase and outfit that building as the Technology Enterprise Center. At the time, Pitt County was told, "For you to have tech-based companies, you're going to have to grow them yourself." A major tech-based company is not going to come to Pitt County. So John Chafee was our leadership then, John worked on and helped us acquire the old Prep Shirt building, that's on North Green Street, that is now our Technology Enterprise Center. We have had a number of companies get their start there, to be able to move out and have a freestanding company. We have one that's a biomedical device that we are keeping as rooted in Pitt County as we have, so that they stay here. It's also an example of how we connect to other organizations. The university runs a pitch competition, the young woman who won that immediately used her money to then acquire space in the Technology Enterprise Center and to grow her business there. So that's, that's how those symbiotic relationships are working. 25-plus years ago, the commissioners, because even then, we were talking about the need for available buildings, particularly industrial shells, the commissioners at the time said, "If you can raise $500,000 from the private sector, we will put up $500,000." We pretty quickly were able to raise that money, the commissioners did indeed put up the other $500,000. In those days, we could build a really nice building for a million dollars, and now you can't. So the number you will see is that there's $2.6 million now in the industrial building fund. So that money came, that additional funding, came from the fund balance of the Development Commission, which is another reason there is not the incentive money there that there would have been otherwise. $2.6 million enables us to build a high-end building, two less high-end buildings, but that is an additional million and a half dollars from ad valorem tax money. So the $500, $500,000 from the private sector, we've never gone back to the private sector to ask for additional funds, the rest of that money comes from ad valorem taxes.
How many shell buildings have we been successful in filling, and I think we have one now?
Yes, we, we have one now. The largest one was what is now Coastal Beverage in Farmville. That one is, we built it at 76,000 square feet, it now is, I think, 120,000 square feet.
Is the number like four or five?
Yes, it's, it's four.
Okay, that was what I was thinking. And most of the companies expand the footage of the building when they purchase it. But it is kind of a, a nice incentive to have when you're speaking to a company to come forward, when you can say, you know, "Here's the building, would you be interested in that?" So just, we can...
And it's also a marketing component, because even if a company looks and says, "No, this building doesn't work for us," if they started with the premise of, "We'll only visit communities that have buildings," that's the only way we got them to visit here. And then finally, the account that we call the Economic Development Fund, some of you will remember when the Global Trans Park was initially being launched, if you were going to be, if county was going to be part of that process, then we had to vote to do that, and a $5 license tag fee was levied. Pitt County was one of those counties. It did have a sunset to it, so you're not still paying that $5 license tag fee. When the state decided that they would no longer be funding regions, and at, at that point in time, our region was no longer the GTP region, it was simply the Eastern Region, the monies that each county had paid in went back to those counties. So we got back that license tag money. We allocated some of that funding for helping launch our biopharma manufacturing efforts. The bulk of it, though, $1,500,000 is still there, because both the Development Commission Board and the county commissioners and our staffs agreed at the time that we didn't want to just dribble that money away. We didn't want to spend $5,000 here and $3,000 there, and then wonder what we did with that money. So that is there to use for a major project. We, in fact, looked at using that, and still are looking at, at that for acquisition of property and establishing another industrial park. And then all the commissioners have our budget notes, these are from last year's budget, I mean, since, yes, I'm already in next year, because we're working on the 2019, 2020 budget. But yes, those are from this year, it lets you see where we are spending money, on consultants' visits, travel, salaries, recruitment efforts, what we're spending on small business entrepreneurship. We can get you the spreadsheets on our budget, if you'd like to have that. For me, it's easier to get the snapshot by looking at this than it is looking at a spreadsheet. And then finally, our organizational structure, there are only four people in our office.
Tab F.
Tab F. I am the executive director, I am hired and fired by the Development Commission Board. It is very clear that if they decide one afternoon that they just don't like me anymore, they could send me home. The end. We have two associate directors, Kelly Andrews, who is marketing and recruitment, Brad Hufford, who is business industry retention and expansion. That position has also included management of our Technology Enterprise Center and working on entrepreneurship initiatives. Our feeling was, we can class that with existing industry. And then finally, our administrative assistant, Crystal Melton, handles all of our bookkeeping, as well as all clerical functions, tracks our, each professional staff member is responsible for handling his or her own grants, but then Crystal tracks our, all of our reports, everything that we need to turn in in that way.
Can you talk, the last one we have is the designation by either the State Department of Commerce or EDPNC as the lead agency, in terms of leads and so forth?
Yes. With the changes that came in the state under the McCrory administration, positions that had, for years, been under the Department of Commerce, were spun out into a private organization, the Economic Development Partnership of North Carolina, and you'll hear us say, EDPNC. Client handling, where a company would go if they want to look at four counties, that's EDPNC. They are responsible for marketing. That includes not only business and industry, though, that includes trade, travel and tourism, a number of categories. Commerce is still where one North Carolina Job Development Investment Grant, CDVG, anything that is financial assistance with the project is with the Department of Commerce, and then those two organizations have to partner. Golden Leaf, even, though they are not directed by the Department of Commerce, is part of what we refer to as the funders forum. So it's a dual role, and we stay in contact with them.
So I guess my, the one you tried out is that the state considers counties the single point of contact unless we say otherwise?
Right. Clearly, the state can't go to 10 different municipalities and say, "We've got a project." Typically, if there is, well, and probably the one that we've used more than any other is the Building Reuse Grant. They have to have a single point of contact, they have to have a way to have those grants monitored. So yes, it, it is awarded to the county. Even the, the award that came from the legislature for $250,000 for economic development, that was awarded to the county. It, it doesn't go to individual municipalities.
Thank you so much. That was exactly what we wanted, and while Scott is going up to the podium, he's, are you not next?
Mr. Coulson's next.
Oh, I'm sorry, I had you right under Wanda. Okay.
She took this.
Oh, okay, you did all of it.
Yeah, you did a lot.
Okay, that's great. Well, I certainly would not overlook this southeastern gentleman who has been so active in North Carolina, in eastern North Carolina particularly. If you want to come on up, thank you so much for coming. He is going to share with us a joint effort in two counties close to us with a similar development. It's not like we're saying, "This is the way to go," but we're looking to see and hear about one that is up and running. And it may not be the way we go, but it will be a good example. And while we do that, if, I don't know if some of you noticed, but we had the list that Ms. Uhas was talking about, since 1957 to 2019, and is it possible to just scroll down that whole thing for these people to see? Okay, if you'll do that, that'll be great. Thank you. Whenever. Okay. Norris, thank you so much for being here today.
I'm delighted to be here, thank you, Madam Chairman. I, I want to say a couple things before I start. First of all, thank you for inviting me to come, Scott, I appreciate the opportunity. Wanda and I don't spend nearly enough time together, but we spend a lot of time together, legitimately, legitimately. I want to make sure y'all understand, it's legitimate. We do cooperate together on a lot of stuff, workforce development being one of those, and also, to a lesser extent than she does, the biopharma crescent that's being worked on between Wilson County and Pitt County, and who else is in that group? Us, us to a, to a lesser extent. What I was asked to do is to talk to you about the Carolina Gateway Partnership, which is a two-county partnership, Nash and Edgecombe County came together. In fact, I helped put it together about 23 years ago. The two counties were, doing their own thing, tracking, doing each other's, doing economic development individually, and a group of people got together, including Senator Bob Martin, who some of you in this room will recall, former Bob Martin, Senator Bob Martin, Bob Malden, Centura Bank, me, three or four other people got together, Bob Barnhill from Barnhill Contract, and they said, "You know, there must be a better way to do this. There's so many things that are common between Nash and Edgecombe County, that wouldn't we better, be better off taking a look at putting together a partnership instead of, instead of doing it individually." I must admit, we also, back in those days, had designs on Pitt County and Wilson County, too. We thought that a regional partnership, I still think, by the way, and I'm not trying to get in the middle of what y'all are planning to do, I still think that a formidable region that would compete with anybody in the East Coast, on the East Coast, is Pitt County, Wilson County, Edgecombe County, and Nash County. Now, the, doing that is difficult because of all the individual counties having their own desires to do things a certain way, and how do you manage it and all that stuff, how do you fund it? Anyway, so we, we back 25, 23, 24 years ago, created the, the Twin Counties Partnership that we call the Carolinas Gateway Partnership. And the, the two counties came together around a concept that said, "We believe we can do more for each other, working together than we can competing with each other." And so that's how this thing came about. Now, I also want to say, as I'm sure Wanda would say, has said to y'all in, in your county commissioner sessions, "There ain't no silver bullets in the economic development business." It is hard work, and, and economic developers like to say that, but it's true, it is really, really hard work. It, it is a team sport, team sport, meaning, in our case, if our two county, the leadership in our two counties are not together, if they don't understand what we're trying to do and do not support it, the first person that understands that is the client that walks in the room and sits across the table from us. And so it is crucial, that whatever y'all wind up doing, you'll see, I don't know, did my slides get in your notebook, unfortunately?
It tab G.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to do that myself. I'm gonna let one of y'all do that.
Click it, Paul.
Yeah, okay. I told them that I was a technological idiot, and that's more true than I like to admit in front of y'all, but at the end of my presentation, I've got two or three slides that said unsolicited advice. Well, I want to go through that with you, because I think that's equally important to me talking about the structure of the Twin Counties Partnership. What we did was, we created a county, a Twin Counties Partnership that, that truly has representation from all the players in the county. It's, it's two counties, 18 municipalities, we are funded by the, the, our operating expense is funded by the municipalities, and we have about 100 investors that invest in incentives, and I'll talk about that. What, the, the funding is based on a formula, it is the formula, and I've got, it's not a complicated formula, but I did bring a sheet with me that talks about it. It is the combination of tax base and population, and it changes every, every time we have a revaluation, or it changes every year based on population. And so the counties, the municipalities, and right now, they're three, they're five, Nash County, Edgecombe County, the town of Nashville, the town of Rocky Mount, and the town of Tarboro, contribute 100% of our funding. We operate on a budget, overhead budget, somewhere around $750,000, and, and I go to the well every year, about now, a year into the budget process here, we go to the well every time about March or April, and, and appear before the commissioners and the town councils, and talk about what we're doing and request funding. Our funding has held steady over the 23 years of this partnership at about that level, and that's kind of what we need to operate with a staff right now, five, in our partnership. Let me talk briefly about the private investors. Were it not for the municipalities, then this partnership couldn't survive, because we could not survive on private investment. One of the, one of the, I know we don't, maybe don't want to get into this here, but I'll say it anyway. I say to people, since I'm 79-years-old, I don't really care whether you like what I say or not. The Economic Development Partnership that was put together for the state of North Carolina, in my opinion, is a flawed strategy, poorly executed. And I say that for this reason. The Economic Development Partnership for the state of North Carolina is a pay-to-play game. You put money in, and you expect to get something back. That is a very difficult process when you're dealing with, as Wanda and I do, hundreds of consultants all over the world, who some of them understand that concept, and some of them don't. And it makes it extremely difficult to sell in that environment, in my opinion. Our process is somewhat similar to that. I didn't create our process, I was involved in creating the partnership, I did not create the funding mechanism. However, we have about 100 investors now in our partnership that we do a five, a five-year funding cycle with our investors, we're about to enter another one. This year, we will, we will go back to the well with our investors. Over, those 100 investors contribute somewhere close to $2 million over a five-year period that we operate on, operate with. The private funds, the, the funds that come from our The private funds, the funds that come from our private investors are used 100% to leverage other incentive money, state of North Carolina money. If we happen to get, as we do, we get about $200,000 worth of foundation money that we apply for every year, and we're fortunate, we've got some very generous foundations that support our work. We use the $2 million, it's about $400,000 a year that comes in because they pay it in on an annual basis. So we use that money to leverage our state incentives or our local incentives. Sometimes we'll go to the county. We've got a project right now that we're about to announce in Nash County, where Nash County put in some money, the city, city put in a little money, and we leverage that money with private funds from our private investors. And it works very well. We can go to the county and the city and say, "We think that the partnership ought to put some skin in this game, if you're willing to put some skin in this game," and they generally will. We will go back to the well this year, and we will see. The last fundraising, Wanda, was during that period where we were in the desert, where there was nothing happening. And we were very pleased that our 110 investors actually, 100 investors actually increased during that period. We had about, I don't know, 85 at that time, went to 100. And the actual money that was committed to us during that period of time actually increased versus our previous time. Now, governance is always an issue for everybody, will be for y'all, I'm sure it is with what you're doing now. We have two levels of governance. I did not create these either because I would have created them a little bit differently. We have a board of directors. And our board of directors right now, number 63 people, that's a big board. You know, when we have a, we meet, the board meets four times a year, we generally get 50, 55 of those that come to a board of directors meeting. So it's a, people are interested and they're coming to the table. Board of directors meet and we, we tend to, that tends to be the 30,000-foot view of what's going on in the county, two counties. And then we have, there is a, the chairman of the board must always be from the private sector, never from the public sector, although we have public sector people on that board. My current board chair is a guy that runs an advertising agency. My incoming board chair will be with me about September of this year, is a guy who is a young entrepreneur. He owns Zaxby's all over the state of North Carolina. And so he is a, we have a very strong interest level among the business community in the two counties. But our vice chair right now happens to be a mayor, and the secretary of our board happens to be chairman of the county commissioners in Nash County, who's a very active participant in all the stuff we do. From that board of directors, we do have a small leadership team, the four people I just met, there's four people, the chairman, the vice chairman, the secretary, and the treasurer. One of those is a public individual, the other three are private. We come together as needed, only as needed, for two reasons. One, I don't particularly like the leadership telling me what to do. That may surprise everybody except Wanda. And secondly, they don't, if they need to be meeting every 10, 15 days, they don't need me, quite frankly. So we use them as needed. We use them when we need to talk about a personnel issue, or if there's something that we need to do on salaries, or something we need to do, if there's a, thank God, there hasn't been, but there's an ethics issue that we run into, we will call them to go to talk about it. The other group is our executive committee. The executive committee is the sort of a more active group of helping us think our way through the strategies and the operations of the partnership. That right now sits at about 25 people, 28, 29 people, sorry, 29 people. We want to make certain that we've got the public folks involved, so we've got education people, non-voting education people sitting on the executive committee, community college presidents, for example, sit on our executive committee. I think we've got one at this point, one superintendent of education sitting on our executive committee. We've got a number, we've got a private college president sitting on our executive committee. But we also have, we want to make certain that at least 15 of that 29 are private industry folks, because private industry folks, let me say it another way, the private industry people are very interested in what we're doing in terms of recruiting companies. The education folks are too, but from a different perspective. Private industry folks come to the table. We are always, as I'm sure you do, Wanda, when you have a client coming in, we are always calling the guy that runs Pfizer, 3,300 employees up there. We are always calling him and saying, "Would you sit down with these people and talk to them about what it's like to recruit in our county, recruit employees in our county?" And we are, we're very fortunate that they always do that. Executive committee meets every month. When I got, when I got there, they had set that executive committee meeting years ago at 7:30 on a Thursday morning. And yeah. And I don't mind, I get there early as one of those, but we, I am, I'm happy to tell you that our 7:30 executive, we hold it to one hour, promise them one hour. So we feed them a little bit of breakfast. So we, our executive committee attendance runs, has been running somewhere in the 75 to 85% range. So we can, maybe it's the biscuit gets them there, I don't know. But they do come, and they are, we do participate. And that's where we tend to, every month, we kind of, we keep the board-executive committee combination updated on what's going on on projects, what's hot, what's not. If there are things that we're getting ready to do, start a new promotion or start a new effort across our partnership that they need to know about, especially if it's going to be public enough to bring them into the, to the mix. Our mission is just like Wanda's mission, that is to recruit new industry and to help the existing folks grow. Because I'm one of those, like I'm sure, I know she is, I've known her a long time, longer than most of y'all have. I'd a whole lot rather grow an industry that's already there than have to go out and recruit a new buffalo. First of all, it's cheaper. Secondly, it stays there longer. So we put a lot of effort into calling on our, one of the requirements of my two folks that work in this organization with me is that I want you to call on every industry in our two counties at least once or twice a year. Go sit down with them, find out what's going on, what we can do to help them. And then I want you to come back and create a plan to help them. Just don't waste their time drinking a cup of coffee. And that works. I mean, we really do get a lot, and I know you do this, too, I know exactly how you operate. So that really does work. First of all, industry appreciates it, and they do have things every now and then that only we can help them with because of the connections that we have with the system, state of North Carolina system. Back on that previous chart, I should have said to you, we have five people in our organization. I have a woman that, who's been with the organization for 20 years, that works Edgecombe County. We have another lady that works Nash County. And two years ago, I hired a young man from East Carolina, as a matter of fact, to come and do a special project. He was an intern, and we liked him so much that we hired him to come on board as a sort of a helper. And now we've hired him, he's been full-time with us about a year and a half. He now runs our research and special projects group. And so, Wanda, thank goodness, I no longer have to beg, wheel, and steal data from the state, we can create our own, which is really helpful. It's much more timely and usually much more accurate. And we have an office manager, bless her heart, who has a word with all of us and pay the bills. And so she keeps the books and works with the auditors and works with our, the financial folks that we hire that write our checks. Now, before I run out of my time, will you, let me get to my unsolicited advice because I'm proud of those two charts. You may not like them, but I'm proud of them. First of all, I want to say that doing what y'all's doing is the right thing to do. Every now and then, when I first went to the partnership, one of the things that me and my chairman did, he came in at the same time I did, by the way, and one of the things that we did was we sat down and we took a hard look, the two of us, at what are we doing, and why are we doing it, and what do we need to change? And one of the things I, we pushed around on was employee compensation, had not been looked at for a number of years. Employee incentives had not been looked at for a number of years. Just some basic governance issues had not been looked at or upgraded in a number of years. And so we worked on those and we fixed them. I think we fixed them, at least they're still operating. But beyond that, then, what is important, and I want to start out here by saying this to y'all, is you do what you wind up doing here in Pitt County. Whatever you do here, you have got to find yourself somebody like Wanda Yuhas. You need a very aggressive person, I'll start to say woman, God knows. That shows you, that shows you that I work with four women in my office. You have to have a very aggressive leader who is willing to push the envelope every single day, as Wanda does, to make sure that Pitt County is getting all the looks it ought to get. Because you cannot, well, let me back up. I won't say you. We in the Twin Counties Partnership, Edgecombe and Nash, Carolinas Gateway, we cannot sit back and wait for the Economic Development Partnership of North Carolina, "Bring me all the leads." We're working 45 projects in our two counties right now. 60% of those leads are self-generated. So we are out telling our story, just like I know you're doing, all over the world, saying, "Pitt County's got a lot of good stuff to offer. We think we've got a lot of good stuff to offer in Nash and Edgecombe." And here it is, and the people that can tell you that story better than anybody else is us who live here. And so, and that works. It really does work. So you've got to have a super aggressive person that you trust, obviously, that you trust, that to run that operation for you. When you do that, you'll get results. I'm scrambling here to find my other paper here. What did I do? I must have left it over at my seat. It is a tendency, I have found over my years, I've been at this now for 30 years in North Carolina in various jobs, it is a tendency for people to want to over-organize and over-manage the people who are doing the job. And you cannot let that creep into your process because when you do, you kill the initiative and the enthusiasm of those that are doing the work for you. And that doesn't mean, that doesn't mean that you're going to just leave them there and let them do their own thing all the time. You don't want to do that either because you can get into trouble that way. But when you create this entity that y'all wind up creating, and it sounds, it's somewhat different than what we do in the Twin Counties, but if you wind up putting it together, as I understand that you're doing, that'll work for you if you, if you plan it well, but don't over-plan it. Assume that you're going to hire, and I trust you will, somebody equally as good as Wanda, and when Wanda decides to hang it up 10 years from now.
We wish.
Yeah. Find somebody really good and allow that individual to recruit the staff to help. Don't, you know, you don't want to load your staff up with political hacks. If you do that, you're in trouble. And then you need to fund them well. Fund them, fund them well. I don't mean lavish, but I do mean well, because one of the things that every rural, every economic development organization across North Carolina has to do is to survive. And I had a lot of people, when I was retiring from the Biotech Center and other places, wanted to offer me jobs, said, "Come and eat what you kill." And I said, "No, thank you. I ain't interested in that. I've worked too long to have to go out and every day worry about, 'Am I going to get a paycheck next month?'" So please, if you're thinking about doing it, I would encourage you to rethink it and think it and think it and think it. However, having said that now, when Wanda and her team bring in projects, they need to be rewarded for that beyond the salary. And so you need, if you don't have a commission structure, we do, it's based on projects, it's very modest, but it still is a little extra reward to bring in a project. Now, if you hire well, back off, and then set, this is probably more important, the thing is, I've said, set reasonable expectations. I was trying to get cute with myself. Miracles take a long time to happen. A lot of people think that if you make a pitch to a client and the client nods his head and smiles and is very polite, that you got the client. Well, at the end of the day, I just remind you that the client has, the client holds all the cards. They may or may not wind up in Pitt County. In fact, I hope some of them wind up in Edgecombe and Nash, quite frankly. But they may or may not want to take your site. They may have somewhere else, and they may be some nuance that is terribly important to them that you don't even know about. I'll give you an example. When I worked for Governor Hunt as the Secretary of Commerce, we had a, we had a company that we were recruiting from New Jersey. And that old boy said, "You know, I don't really want to leave New Jersey, but my wife does. She wants to come to North Carolina." Best recruiting source we had was that guy's wife. And so we wound up getting that client, they moved to Monroe County, and she was happy as she could be, and he got to be happy after a reasonable period of time. So there are things that are working in an economic development deal that aren't so obvious to you at the county commissioner, and may not be to Wanda and to me as we're working the client. But nevertheless, she has to be prepared to deal with that. She has to have the latitude to be able to deal with that. So as a support group, our executive committee are the guys that I go to all the time. When we've got something that, that it's really a naughty issue that we have to get resolved in our partnership, I'll call the chairman and he'll either get together all the executive committee or a portion of it, and we sit down and talk about it. And at the end of that, we try to do everything that we get advised to do by the executive committee, but sometimes the actual nature of the solicitation that we're doing won't allow that. So you've just got to be able to adjust. And so that's what I mean when I say, provide oversight, not day by day, but be available to help close when you need it, and then be smart enough to know when you need to back off and say, "Okay, it's yours, go with it." So I've kind of rambled on with you there a little bit, but I'm perfectly willing now to take any questions you have. I will say to you that we believe, at least for the Edgecombe-Nash County group, this is the right way to go. Our results are pretty good. I heard Wanda, I was a little bit amused of Wanda's numbers earlier when she was talking about it. This partnership's been in existence 22 years. Over that 22 years, it's created with the stuff that we did last year, which was a very good year for us. We now have done somewhere right at $3 billion of investment in the two counties. Right at a billion of that was last year, by the way. And then we created right at 15,000 new jobs. But, Wanda, as you've heard me say before, we're sitting in Edgecombe County right now, Edgecombe and Nash County right now, with 2,500 jobs in the bank that we have to find people to fill. And so the biggest problem Wanda's got right now, and that I've got right now, and then Mecklenburg County's got right now, and Nash County, or Wake County's got right now, the Wake County guys won't admit that to you, but they got it, too. They need people to go to work. And so Wanda referred to it earlier, we have created a project that she's helping us with, we call it Ramp East. It's 10 counties in eastern North Carolina and eight community colleges coming together to create a marketing program, not a training program, a marketing program that will get people ready to apply for jobs. And the pool of people that we're looking at are adult learners. We know that, including Pitt County and Wilson County and Edgecombe and Nash and all these other counties we're working with, there are 25,000 people in those counties that have said, "I need a new job, I want a better job, or I want a job." And so we're going after those to see if we can get them ready to get into a training program. The other part of this program that she's helping us with is the public school system. Next month, we will bring the superintendents to the table to say, "We want to start training at the ninth grade level to get people ready to be recruited into jobs if they want to have a job when they leave the high school." There are two very important messages. One, you've got to get yourself certified through a training program, which the community college with the public school system will do. But you also need to understand that you cannot graduate with a police record and be taking drugs, because if you do, you will not be considered. These companies will not hire you, period, end of discussion. And the third group that I'm excited about, and we're working with a guy here at East Carolina, Jim Minkie, who some of you may know, the military. We believe that the military is a tremendously untapped resource because you've got all these people who are going to be retiring from the military or be the, whatever they call it, outplaced from the military into the real world. You get them, when they get ready to leave, they're looking for a job. And a lot of these them, and when they get ready to leave, they're looking for a job. And a lot of these people that are in North Carolina right now like North Carolina and won't stay here. And so we're making a conscious effort to get inside the retirement loop in the military, and see if we can recruit some of those people to take jobs in our eastern counties. I believe that it's a major source of resource for us, Wanda. And we're making some, we've got some progress with that, but it's slow, because you're breaking into the biggest bureaucracy in the world, the US military. If I ain't confused you by now, I can't. Anybody have a question for me? Madam Chairman, I'd be glad to answer whatever I can.
I don't, do you have a question, or Alex? No. But anyway, yes, we'll take some time for questions. We were, you know, the presentation was to give an opportunity to all the commissioners and citizens to know that situations like this are working. But when you have a very successful county group that is proceeding on, and I do want us to scroll down all of those accomplishments, and I know everybody doesn't have a Wanda Yuhas in the leadership we've had in the past, because it is a full-time job, and it's 24/7, sometimes lots of traveling, and lots of disappointments while you're standing there with a smile on your face. But anyway, we just thank you so much for your presentation. Alex, your question?
Last comment she just made, a lot of disappointments. If you cannot live with rejection, you don't want to be in the economic development business. I promise you, you don't want to be in this game, because you can have what you think is the cat's meow of a presentation, and you've got a great incentive package, and you've got a wonderful piece of land that you've got to have, and you've got plenty of workforce. The guy looks at you and says, "Well, you know, I'm going to go to Texas." Well, that's kind of hard to take if you've got a lot of ego like mine. You had a question, somebody?
I wondered if you could just comment about the various levels of private contributions to this, and do those companies stay in the five-year cycle? Do you have?
We've got it from $50,000 down to $5,000.
And how is that? Is that when they're locked in for five years? Is that?
You know, if somebody puts in 50 and wants to write us a check for it, we'll take it. But most of the time, it comes in 10,000, Heckrem sold for five years. We had a guy recently that we didn't know was coming in, came in and wanted $10,000, and so he's got $10,000 coming in over five years, 2,000 bucks a year. But some people, the smaller ones, will just go ahead and write the check, $1,000, $2,000. We're very, very fortunate that we've got so many people that are committed to us. We're going to see what happens in the next cycle. Wanda, I was thinking about this the other day, as we were getting ready to put our plans together for the next cycle. God, we raised $1.9 million when it was a desert. We didn't have anything coming in, no project. And we've had about, the last year, year and a half now, the Twin Counties had brought in somewhere around $1.2 billion in investment, and right at 1,500 new jobs. I'm sitting there saying, "Boy, that new number ought to really look good." But I've been around long enough to know that ain't where it works.
You mentioned how long it took to get light twenty-five.
Yeah, oh yeah. Well, let me back up from that. That's a really good point. I should have said that. The Kingsborough Megasite, which is one of the five megasites in North Carolina, which is 2,000 acres, the county owns it all. Edgecombe County worked on the Kingsborough Megasite for 21 years before we got a client, before we got a client. We got the first client last year. We worked on the Triangle project. Triangle, the Triangle's a Chinese tire company. And I've got to tell you all, I love it that we got it, but there are many days I wish we hadn't, because if you hadn't worked with the Chinese, come on in, join the crowd. They were recruiting, they were looking at, they were looking at five sites in North Carolina and four other states. And Alabama and Georgia had been very successful in breaking and getting a lot of, as Wanda, getting a lot of tire companies to go there. And in essence, my Georgia friends don't like me to say this, in essence, they were buying the projects with very, very low utility rates. And we said, "By God, the time for that to be over is over." And so we worked really, really hard to get a really great incentive package together, and it's got, you know, tax incentives in it, and it's got J-Dig in it, and it's got workforce development stuff from the community college in it. And we also were able to get a very competitive electric rate, because this tire company is going to use a lot of electricity. All legal, by the way. Everything we did on the electric, it's, but we gave them a rate that was competitive to what Georgia said. Georgia told me after the project was announced to North Carolina, a friend of mine, then I called him and said, "We thought we had it." And so, "We don't know what you guys did." And I said, "I ain't going to tell you either." But we were able to get a very good electric rate, and a very good reliable source of natural gas to help them with that process. Triangle Tire is the biggest project in rural North Carolina history. At full buildout, it will be somewhere around $1.2 billion in investment, and will wind up somewhere around 1,200 to 1,400 people. But I promise you all, I'm a retired DuPont guy, and I've seen hundreds and hundreds of plants in my career in DuPont. There will never be, there has never been a more modern plant in the state of North Carolina than this one's going to be. It's 100% roboticized, 100% air-conditioned. The floor is as clean as the floor in this room. It is a marvelous plant. I've been on their facility four times in China. It is a marvelous facility. We will be very proud of it in eastern North Carolina. And it's going to attract employees from about a 17 or 18-county radius.
Ms. Huggins, maybe you said this and I missed it, but with those investors, five years, did you have anybody dropped out within that five-year period before they paid that answer?
I'm sure that over five years, especially if they went out of business. I don't know, I'm trying to ask a question. I mean, it is comfortable, but it's a really good question. But we're pleased when one drops out, we're only going to be able to come out and do it. If they drop out, there's a company called, there's a special contribution to us, Club.
So thank you again so much for coming, offering a perspective on public-private partnerships. From an objective standpoint, looking at our county moving from a county-run organization to one where we're diversifying and bringing in the private sector and bringing in a city partner, what do you view, as someone that currently heads up one of these, as the biggest risk for going, you know, diversifying, I guess, I guess what's going on?
I don't see a risk at all, quite frankly. I don't know how we would do economic development in Nash County, Edgecombe County. We didn't have a public sector, we didn't have education people at the table. We didn't have the business community at the table. We didn't have a city or a government. I learned that, I don't mind admitting, I learned that in Jim Hunt. Jim Hunt taught me that if you want to close a deal, you better have all the players at the table. You do not want to invite them out of the deal, except the opposite. And so I don't see any risk of what we're trying to do. Now, there's going to be some growing pains if you get into it, if you try to flesh out everything. But I really don't see any risk of doing all of that. So maybe there's a critical aspect of that. But if the county wants to do the best for, and I'll just let you explain, and you want to say to the rest of the world, you want to be recruiting to, we're to get, you've got something you want to invest in our county, we've got all the players at the table. You want to worry about it when you're here, what happened to Chamber, what happened to Charlotte Chambers, or not Bolton? What happened to the community college? We learned our space door about the community college. Now we need to get help out of it. I mean, what happened? That's our responsibility, that's hers responsibility, you know, one to one situation. So I don't really see it happening. There's going to be something, they say, "Oh, no, we're associated with Chamber, we're associated with the community college." That's their problem. I think about that, he asked, really, it's Tulsa, and not Tulsa, but I don't know, like, somebody said to me, "You're a brother."
After my reputation, he changed his name.
All my best friends in the world were with us. The question they got to ask, I don't know, you ask, or maybe you ask. Somebody asked a question, how many of the companies are still there? We lose over the 20 years that we've recruited, two, three million dollars. We talk a lot of things. They're trying to help them with a couple of others. Well, they got farmed by somebody, or they're probably. But the comment, the monitoring is equal to you. We take that real estate, whatever it is, that's available after that happens, but we put it right back in the market. And we've got reasonable success with it, because right now, Shell Building, it's a Shell Building. Shell Buildings, existing buildings are huge. Special capital, everybody can see. So, yeah, we lose, we lose one of our guys, one of our guys that makes this in Nash County, every few years. How many companies have we gathered, golf? And how do you make it there? I just tell them every month, we ask them, we just recruit them. They're out there somewhere, somebody will reflect that.
I want to, I wanted to, for a number of years now, I've been curious about something. Because in your educational end, the drawcard for people like me, it's hard to go. We have to go to Raleigh and Greensboro. But you have something in Nash County that's building up, filling up your hotels right now. And I can't see how you did that, but I know they spent a lot of money, and they said, "Meet me there." And I said, "What's going on?"
Well, let me interrupt you to say that for years and years, and I probably got a conversation with you, Greenville has the same opportunity that Rocky Mountain has the same. Mills Project, the Vet Center that just opened in downtown, Wesleyan College, Wesleyan College, by the way, three years ago, it had 600 students. This year, it's got 1,100, next year, 1,500. We're figuring out, right now, how do we bring all those kids downtown? That's not the bag. That's not our bag. That's not our deal, is the trustful development, which is where we are. But I'm working with the president of Wesleyan and the city manager at Rocky Mountain, by the way, as a motherfucker, saying, "How do we get all those kids downtown spending money?" And one of the answers, by the way, is, "We don't have bus service, and most of those kids out there don't have cars." So right now, the city manager has to be figuring out, how do we get a guaranteed bus service, the bus out there picks them up, brings them back, if they don't want to drive back to you. So, but I promise you, and I can say this, I'm from Rocky Mountain, I lived there, I've never lived there, if you go to Rocky Mountain today and come back five years later, it is slowing you down. I think you can feel the energy, the vibrations. So I don't know who invited you, but thank you.
It's the Alumni Association that's drawing cards. I've never seen one like it over here in the eastern part of this country.
Well, I might put it back to you, I think Greenville has a deeply better opportunity than Greenville ever since then.
It's not.
Sorry?
Okay, we're going to have one more question from our manager, and then we've got to feed the angry beast.
You mentioned your megasite is 2,000 acres, Ombata County.
1,600 acres left, just 400 acres I was trying, so 16.
So do you believe it's best that the county own that property, or the private sector own it? Because a lot of times when the public sector own it, we expect to give it away or substantially reduce it.
If it's a private sector owned, then Wanda cannot control the mechanism. When I came to Nash County, one of the first things that I started working on was basically my ass. How much land do we own? How much we have under our control? The first question they go ask her, how much, do you have land? And do you control that land? What is the price of that land? Since a private sector may know the price, if you want to control it, if it's in the county, it's the hand.
Do you believe they use some substantial, should substantially reduce that price of land based upon what you're going to pay for it, to land that deal?
That's the beauty of you want, you have control. If the landlord, the private people are, I've got, we've got 5,200 acres of land in Nash County, it's all on our board. We own that, we, the county, own that, right at 3,000 acres of that. And we've got another 2,000 acre option. If you don't want, like, I would encourage you to option, I own, that's what I, that's option, unless that's invested in money. Just get it on. And then we also have something, you may have here, we have a marketing arrangement. We'll go to a landlord and say, "Well, I don't want to sell that thing, but I might." And so we say, "Okay, let us, we do have a marketing arrangement with us. You set a price, we will, we will offer your price. And you have the right to say that we bring you, but I don't want to do that yet." And we don't push that real hard, so that takes place on us, like, so the best way for us to do it is to either own or option. And the option bound does not. But at the end of the day, when you get kind of like, trying, trying to land became a really big deal for Chinese, they had never invested in the US before. They didn't understand the US, the economic rules, they don't understand the US law too. But being agents too, had that man, and wanted potential losers compared to the team. Thank you all.
Thank you so much. And I appreciate the group that's here to hear what's going on, and maybe we can scroll that down of accomplishments, because from '57 to '19, our development group has come a long way, baby, and we're still going hard, and we do appreciate you a lot. We'll break for lunch, and if this group can go through the line first, we'd love to have you all join us for, I mean, you're welcome to join us. Thank you.
We'll reconvene. We'll reconvene folks, and Scott is going to pick up, is that right? Or Janice? Or are they going to pass off the balls back and forth between each other? Let me just say that I think what has happened up to this point was exactly what I had hoped, that I think we've all gotten a better picture of what it is that's going on in our own county, and how effective we have been, and what a good job that we have done, and how our development commission has evolved as well and as far as it has. And that is a big platform for us to build on, to move forward. We really do want to acknowledge the fact that Mr. Tulsa coming and sharing with us what's been going on for 21 years in two of our adjoining counties has helped us to understand how this can work. It was not meant to be a model, and he knew that, and he doesn't mean for us to take it at that. But certainly, there were a lot of things when we, that we can learn as far as their pitfalls were concerned, and how it was developed when we get ready to move forward with making a plan for Pitt County and the municipalities, and also the private sector. Thank you so much. Give it to the manager.
So we're moving to block three on this agenda for the day, and I wanted to say, I really meant to say this in the very beginning, my last point, and when we, whatever the purpose, was that, at the end of the day, through this whole process, obviously, our goal, as a county, as an entity, as we move forward, is to build upon our past practices and successes, and at the end of the day, is expanded tax base and additional jobs. And that's, that's, I mean, at the end of the day, that, that's, that's the goal, is we try to make, um, Pitt County, um, a, a better community, in terms of having more resources to, to, with, have jobs for, for our people who are seeking jobs, or those underemployed can, can get trained, workforce can get trained into jobs where they can take. So, this Block Three was kind of designed, um, it's entitled Elements of a New P3 Model for Economic Development. P3 is obviously the Public-Private Partnership, an acronym of, of saying it. So, some of the things that we, um, have on here, the bullets, um, obviously, a program of work was presented to you, um, by, um, Crystal Morphus with Creative, um, Economic Development, um, Consulting. There's legal considerations to, to think about in a P3 model, there are, whether it's a public, primarily, public entity, private entity, or a combination of public-private, uh, board composition is, is, are things that still need to be discussed, financial contributions by the entities. So, the real question here is, would the board like to, um, to discuss these now, or at a later time? If now, we could approach this by open-ended questions, like, what would you like to see in terms of the program of work that's been presented? Right now, the program of work that we have is primarily with the Development Commission industrial, we do stretch those boundaries and do other things outside of that, but we justify it as being under the umbrella of industrial, versus a, a wider scope of program of work, if we had other, other resources. So, each of these areas could be taken, if the board wanted to discuss these, or if the chairman wanted to, you, you talked about setting another workshop date, so it's really up, up to the board, how, where you want to take this discussion, now or later.
Well, I think if, I mean, I don't know how you feel, but I think a short discussion, if anybody wants to ask some questions about these four things, but I certainly think there is another meeting on the horizon, and I would hope that at that time, uh, we, as commissioners, can come together with, um, a plan, uh, that would serve the whole county well, and, uh, similar to, uh, the development. We've got to speak to the industrial part, because that's the source of our money, and, and I don't even know how that's gonna work legally, and we're gonna have to figure that out. Because we do want to expand it to include the, um, um, smaller businesses that, you know, may move to other towns and, and cities within Pitt County, and that sort of thing. So, uh, there's a lot for us to talk about, but I, I'm, and I, and I would like for us to think about, in terms of your questions, and what you would like to see us do at our next meeting, because, right now, I feel like it's for us to come up with a plan for development, economic development in, um, Pitt County. Okay. Do you want, do you, I was gonna say, I was just starting all the way down and come up...
Okay, start with Tom then, 'cause I, I've got everything.
Talk about, um, this part, or bring it up?
No, not, not really, because I don't know what to really say at this particular point. Uh, one of my objectives was, when we talked, I'll call it the pause, as for the pause, was to make sure that the new members understood what we were potentially being asked to do. And that, that's to roll our county money and development into a bigger entity, of which, at the time, I kind of considered a runaway train. So, I'm, I'm not sure that I have anything to say at this particular time.
Um, yes, ma'am?
I want to say it just right. As far as new member is concerned, for me, development isn't, I'm a new member. My exposure, so far, hasn't been the full ram of what I determined was new development. And of course, one has strayed me out a time or two, but we, commercial development brings jobs as well, 'cause someone has to work in those, uh, small business, or larger commercial things, and commercial development brings jobs. And if I can recall, when Pitt Plaza started, that's what it used to be called, or what it called now, they started, people came because they wanted to get a job in that shopping center, and they wanted to do, and people start moving into Greenville, because they found it was a closer place to go to shop. You didn't have to go, uh, a hundred miles away. Economic development, to me, is a multi-plastic, uh, situation. Not leaving out development, not, and, and also including, uh, and I know what I'm expecting here, this, including commercial development. Because, and, and, and I look at, before, uh, what's his name? Before Alex got here, you hear me, when I talk about Bethel, a lot of times, I would mention Fountain, and Griffin, and the outlining areas, because I truly think that if Pitt County is gonna be the best areas in eastern North Carolina, then we have to be a better, uh, picture of physical reception of the tax dollars. No one in our county should have to drive fifteen miles for their families to, to get good quality service, be it job, be it commercial development, be it play, we ain't gonna worry about education, and, and medical, you know, we got, we have that. But we don't have entertainment for the whole gamut. Now, that, that's me, and I'm not just talking from when I went to that, uh, academy, and they focus on our developing a mission as a commissioner, they said, "All right, you are new commissioner, we're gonna give you an hour to come up with the, you, you handling people tax data, we're gonna give you an hour to come up with a goal that's acceptable for the position you hold." And, and I says, "But in the position as commissioner, a certain group elected me, but I'm representing the entire tax gamut for Pitt County." That's just why I mention other areas, because physically, I see a void. And if we're gonna be the best in the east, we must work together to fill those voids throughout our county. Yep, we have a lot of flooding, of flooding in my district, but I always think about, when development wants to take place, I think about, um, right across the bridge from Ford, Ford, those apartments over there. I know what it was like before the apartment got there, but they got development. We need houses. Now, Edgewood County, they have population, they're gonna be hiring, bringing people in for that job. We, we, we need to put some, we, we need to put some, uh, houses o, over there, he's situated. And you know what? It will flow over into another area. But if we stop be, being, if we, uh, start being more open in our thinking, rather than a narrow pitch, I never lived in the city. I've always lived in, on, in rural areas, in farmland, I like breathing, and I think everyone should have the opportunity to live where they really like living. And, and, and I, I'd just like to see, I, this is home for me. And there was a time when I wanted to leave home, but the community said, "No, we, we got, we, we got to have you." So, here I sit, with mixed emotion, and I want to do the best job that I can do for this residents of Pitt County, the best of my ability, without biases, but filling the voids. And you, you, you can call it what you want to. I'd like to see us build, fill the bars, boards, boards, and plug the holes for our places, because, I don't mean in harm, but Greenville is not the only municipality in this town. They just happen to be the county seat. I know what it is, government-wise, I, I took civics, it's the county seat. And I know you had to tell me that, when I went to have this office for constituency services, and I'm gonna cut it short, do you know I wanted to get on the Edgewood County electronic thing, the electronic, as a, as a customer? Right across the street is Edgewood County, but my office has to be Greenville Utilities, and I didn't have a choice, and it was right there, what's wrong with that picture? I didn't have the freedom to select two, when they both was in my area. You think about that now, they're right across the street. And this is the problem that people have when they are economically deprived, they don't have choices, that he has, 'cause he can, he can, he can pay all that, he can set up all them, I'm picking on, but, or him over here, that's 'cause I'm sitting between two of them. But the thing of it is, the choices we make, we don't have options to make the best choice for our families. And that's what, we're gonna be the best, if our families in this county gotta have choices for all the areas. I want to be able to play. I want to start dragging a young being that, from down out the street, so give them something to do, because they can't get to Alice King Park. They can't get to the school, because it's, it's more than a block or a mile, down the street, round the corner, over in another field over there. And so, we gotta be a bit more, uh, I don't want to say equal, 'cause it, that ain't it, we have feel, we have to fill the voids, and I don't want to call it equalizing, or whatever, I won't talk about filling bars and plugging the hole, and this is what this economic potential should do for us, throughout Pitt County. That's what I'm looking for, and I'm finished, Scott, 'cause you are really bold.
Not bored, Neil. Never, when you're talking. Alex.
I found this very interesting and informative, I appreciate the delay in allowing us to get caught up to speed, I feel much closer, although there's a lot still to go. Um, I was very impressed with what the county has been doing, and the detailed presentation there, um, I'm grateful that Mr. Tolson came in and helped us understand things. It was interesting, he's talking about public transportation, Commissioner Perkins-Williams is talking about public transportation, and the last thing I would say is that I hope that this kind of thought continues, that the, you know, when, when, uh, Mr. Tolson was talking about, uh, figuring out a way to use the workforce coming from the military and the college, I think that's a fantastic idea. We also have a workforce in the rural parts of the county, that if they were better able to get to job sites, it might be, uh, uh, help in, in, in all of this, too.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, uh, Mr. McLaughlin was calling in. Melvin, are you not able to hear us?
I can't hear you, but, now, uh, if you want me to just, I can't hear, hear anything what you want me to hang up, if you call, it's actually, actually, thank you.
Um, I'll, I'll have to defer to, uh, to Jana.
He can't hear.
"He can't hear," was what he said.
We're not, Mike, we're not amplifying this, are we? So, he's hearing down there what's being said?
Oh, okay. Tell him that we're trying to get it tapped in. I'm sorry. Are you through? I just think it's...
You shouldn't have.
We can pass my phone down. As people are talking. I mean, I'd rather do that than...
Yeah, actually.
We can pass my phone down as people are talking. Okay. Okay, can you hear us, Melvin?
Can y'all hear us?
Good day, great, thank you, thank you for calling in. Good day. Mr. Albari, did you finish? Okay, great. Next.
Thank you, members of the public who came today. I'm, I'm really excited about, uh, the opportunity that the county, um, has to work, um, in a leadership role with collaborating with all of our economic allies, um, in eastern North Carolina, and specifically within the county, at developing an effective, and efficient, and powerful, uh, group, uh, to help leverage everything that we've got going well for us in Pitt County. The idea of being able to market and package our story in a way, um, that folks that are not from the region, we know what's going on here, but that folks that maybe haven't been here in the last twenty years, um, can better, um, able to hear about it. Right now, we're, you know, our operating budget's at seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I think if you ask anyone if that were a lot of money on the national market, or a regional market, it's, um, it's just a drop in the bucket. And, and this, this opportunity to, to leverage private assets and other ally assets to, um, better package and tell our story, uh, will prove to be very powerful. I'm also particularly excited about, and I'll echo Mary's sentiment, the opportunity that we have with such a partnership, to really do our job as county government, to make sure that our smaller municipalities have a voice, that they're able to have someone that's dedicated to working with their small business communities, at telling their story. As the city of our county grows, as Greenville grows, folks have to move somewhere, whether that they want to live in a rural setting, a small-town setting in Bethel, Farmville, Aiden, Grimesland, Simpson. We need to have a person on our economic development team that's able to assist people, getting people into those communities, and then also helping folks within those communities, um, get up and running with their small businesses. Small businesses thrive when our big industry thrives. And then, third, I think that this cannot go without stating, that, that where we are is really a legacy of all of the great work of the PDC. When this Economic Development Commission was formed in the fifties, um, it was cutting edge, and we have a local statute that allowed us to raise funds to, to, to leverage government support to develop our industry, and it's been successful. It's time for us to grow, it's time for us to make, take the next step, and I'm hoping that the members of this commission will be visionary, and, and I'd like to see us, at our next regular meeting, um, you know, get our ducks in a row, and endorse, and, and start moving forward with, with getting, um, getting ahead of this, and, and leading the charge to really have a dynamic, um, public-private partnership in place, um, by the end of the year, beginning of next year.
And, um, first, I want to say, um, that, um, I'm very thankful for this opportunity to hear another perspective on the idea, um, 'cause I'm, uh, always, uh, open for, uh, more information on this. I, um, I look forward to, uh, to moving, uh, moving ahead with, with whatever, uh, model we decide to, to do. One thing that, one question that, uh, was important that, uh, Mr. Tolson said, uh, and that was, uh, what do we need to change? So, I'm especially, uh, uh, interested in, and, and I'm glad that, that the chairman Ward asked, uh, wanted to tell us what we've done so far. Ward asked, uh, Wanda to tell us what we've done so far, how well we've done so far. So thank you for that, uh, Wanda. Uh, so that, to me, uh, will help with saying, okay, what do we do, what do we need to change? Excuse me. And um, I listened to uh, Mr. Tolson talk about the, the um, the, the uh, Carolina Gateway Partnership. To me, it did say that the model we have been presented needs some more working. Uh, so I, I would not be satisfied with, with the way uh, it is being presented right now. So I see us uh, having some more workshop meetings, uh, looking at, you know, the legal aspects, aspect of it, the board composition and financial, all of that. Uh, because uh, you know, that uh, partnership has been in existence for what, twenty-two, twenty-three years? And I'm not impressed with what they have accomplished yet, because uh, the poverty level is the highest in the state. Uh, so to me, and, and he said that he's looking at training, going to the schools and starting with the ninth grade and uh, so, you know, I, I like that idea, and also to tap into the military, you know, so I like that idea, so that, that gives me, gives us, I think, uh, some things that uh, we can certainly uh, tap into. You know, he called them his insolent, unsolicited uh, advice, you know, for some of those things that, that he talked about. So again, you know, and, and something he said that we need to do when we uh, hire replacement for Wanda. That person needs to be very aggressive. Uh, and I believe when I heard the presentation to us uh, about the model, it said that this uh, group would hire Wanda's replacement. Uh, so maybe, I don't know if I got that, but that's kinda what, what I got from the presentation. So I'm not, uh, I'm not sure that I like that idea. So uh, uh, I am, I'm still, um, I'm still looking, listening, and waiting to see what we need to do, where we go from here. Uh, that will be uh, the best thing for the citizens of Pitt County.
I think Chris hit the nail on the head. We're at a, kind of a, a unique opportunity right now to um, give, get everybody on the same page, um, both in the private and public sector. And um, it sounds like that would be for the benefit of, of everyone in Pitt County. And, and I feel like we owe it to the citizens of Pitt County to try and come up with a collaborative effort, and it sounds like all that framework has already been established, and I think we need to pursue it.
Thank you. Okay, Melvin, would you like to make a comment?
Uh, I, I only wanna say that I think, I, I appreciate the presentation, I think it was a very good presentation. Uh, however, I think we certainly have to be diligent to the citizens of Pitt County uh, whom we serve. Uh, this is a major project, and I think uh, we have to make sure we make it through all of the delicacy and the, 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 the small uh, situations that may occur. Uh, I, I'm interested in having this public hearing, uh, when that takes place, uh, maybe at one of our meetings, kind of, where the citizens are coming, uh, how they feel about this. Uh, this is not a small task, it's a large task. However, I, I think economic development is a certain, something that we need to have, and we need to try to bring as many jobs, opportunities for our citizens here in Pitt County as possible. Uh, but I think we have to be very, very careful in terms of, of rushing into it. Uh, we, we, we have to be mindful of all of these, these things before we try to uh, uh, get involved. However, I think it's a good project, it sounds good, but um, uh, let's be careful, let's just kinda take our time and, and get questions answered, uh, to satisfaction of all the women's that you represent.
Okay, thank you very much, Melvin. Um, is Glenn on? Does he, well, where is he? Is he?
Do you have him down there?
I mean, have you got him down?
Okay.
Oh, okay, um, Glenn, hey, I didn't know you were both together. Anyway, in the same phone. Uh, but, would you, would you like a comment?
Yeah, I uh, I think if I, if I recognize the voice break, let's speak much better way. But, but uh, I, I'm kinda with him on, you know, moving forward because you've been doing a lot of great things, I know, over the years, but we are dealing with very old statutes that, and you know, I heard there, he's talking about commercial development, but commercial development is usually followed by residential development. Uh, but you talk about media, I think, uh, this, they're gonna be, you are, so, as we grow, you know, that's better, but people are looking at everything you've done, and I love you do projects and bring your, the, the, fix it out, just your jobs, building a lot of those jobs, you're, you're better, you're better, you're sure you're somewhere else to take that job, that, with that expertise. And, and the reason I like this combination role is that we're diversifying and investing in, in other things, and hopefully creating, you know, people that are here, for all the wonderful stuff we've done in that public development, we still have over, uh, Mr. Ford or, or the population lives in poverty, and that's been for more than twenty years, or maybe thirty years, so we haven't really been shifting that, I guess, because they feel a little bit of time in poverty. But, yeah, some of them, we've really gotta get dynamic, we've really gotta, and I know it's changed all these, everything, and I don't think we can jump, or I mean anything, but I think we really need to seriously consider that, seriously consider that, because if it's not working, we need it. But, and, and do something else, but the, I think the state even get wrong to, look at the statutes, because, you know, we can't operate in two thousand nineteen, on into the future, on nineteen fifty, uh, statutes, and especially if you consider the lack of investment by the state in the east, for the most part, for connectivity and things, getting those interstates are coming, but still, until there's other hubs around the east to connect it, if you're really gonna be just driving it, in the old way, it's, it's kinda a trend water source, if you're really, uh, moving this that far forward, leading to my people. But uh, that's all I've got for, I, I do appreciate the presentation, everyone that's uh, and, and, and contribution, because if, if we all, we all down, because this is quite a different thing, everybody's, uh, just to make the county, that's, that's, at least we're uh, honest dealers in that with each other, and if we collaborate, and they, they thank the county, uh, something that we can really be proud of.
Thank you. Um, okay, I waited to the last, um, and I'm gonna say my piece, and I hope I say it correctly. Um, thank you all so much for coming here on a Saturday. Um, our next meeting hopefully will be, as we had planned this one, hopefully at maybe late afternoon, when everybody will have their daily stuff out of the way. And speaking of that meeting, um, I think there were a lot of things said today, and we're not meeting today to go on and on and on and on. I think we have learned a lot. This was not meant to be a model that we follow completely, but it was just to show us an effective model, they've been there twenty-one years, and it has worked for them, and we can learn some things from that. But we are way, way along, I'm sure that's not correct, the English, Ms. Jordan, but um, with development in Pitt County, we've done a phenomenal job, we just need to build on it, just as um, Glenn said, and we need to grow it. I think that I would like for our staff, between now and when we set our next meeting, uh, to listen to some of the things that we have talked about, that we would like to see in a development plan. We've got to speak to the development part and the economic part, and the small business part, arrival, we wanna say that. Um, and we've got to protect our money that we get from the state to spend as, as far as the county is concerned, when it comes to finances. The, uh, I, I will have to say some of the things that were brought up, like uh, educating our youth in our high schools. We started a long time ago, um, starting with eighth grade and um, even further down to sixth grade, trying to build in some programs that students could graduate from high school and be ready to be hired at different jobs. And that is going on now, and it is continuing to grow, and I'm sure we can improve on it. I serve on the uh, Pitt Community College Board as a liaison, and I am here to tell you, they are so tuned in to the needs, development, the uh, industries. I know that um, Wanda has spoken with them and works with them on what it is we need to have coming out of PCC. And if you haven't been there and seen the improvement in, in everything that's going on there, they are graduating people ready to go into a workforce, and we can grow that even more. It's not like we've reached the total success there. We owe it to our citizens to collaborate, and we need to bring in the um, um, business people and those people who are successful and are willing to support us in this, in developing this county, to be um, at the max. Um, nobody has got the exact answer, but I don't think we need to drag our feet, I'd like to have us, at least have something to talk about at our next meeting, and we can hash it out, and if we have to have another one, we'll have to have another one. But I want Pitt County to come up with a plan that will continue on with the good work that we've done in Pitt County, and improve upon it, and to bring in the private sector. Anybody else wanna say anything, or can I adjourn? Y'all got any questions, the county? Okay, and you can get your help from anybody you want to, as long as I approve. No, anyway. No, but, and I do want to thank our Pitt County staff and employees for doing what they had to do today to set this up and to get this opportunity going. Thank you again, and we are adjourned.